Good evening, everyone. I, Council President Walsh, call the January 8th Special Committee of the Hall meeting to order at 6:31 PM. As a reminder, life just continues being remote, hybrid, all of that. So both staff and members of the public may be participating with us remotely tonight. There are multiple public comment opportunities at tonight's meeting. There's going to be a first general public comment opportunity at the beginning, or you can make comments after the presentation and council question and answer period on tonight's agenda items. So, members of the public may address council at this time in person or virtually. Those who signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. If you're joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand. If you're on the phone, you're going to press star three. If you're on a computer or smart device, you're going to look for the hand icon, or you can send the host a chat message. So if you're in the room, and I will note, we do not have any members of the public in the room, though our lovely staff has taken up some of the seats. We love that. But I will ask for other speakers before closing portion of the meeting. So I'm going to see if anyone wishes online to raise a hand.
We actually don't have any members of the public with us online tonight.
Okay. Well, as I will always say, we will take your emails. You can reach all seven of us by emailing citycouncil@isakawa.gov, and we'll actually read them, you know? We're not too big. We'll take any emails you guys want to send us, really. Okay, so I guess we will go on to our agenda items. So we've got two items on the agenda tonight. We've got AB 8553 Public Records Policy and Fee Schedule, and then we've got ID 1547 Enhancing Permit Review Efficiency. So we will start with the Public Records Policy and Fee Schedule presented by Tammy Mueller, our public records analyst.
Today, we are talking about the public records policy and primarily the fee schedule. So if you want to stop me at any time to ask any questions, otherwise hopefully this will be pretty short. There'll be plenty of time at the end. Tonight, we are asking for your direction on whether to move forward with having us provide the -- it's a new proposal for the January 16th council meeting where we would hope that we would approve the resolution and adopt the public records policy and the newly proposed public records fee schedule, and then adopt the ordinance that would repeal the conflicting and redundant sections of the municipal code. Oh, and the fees would go into effect on February 15. During the December 4th council meeting, there was a motion to adopt the resolution and the ordinance approving the public records policy and fees, but it was referred to this meeting to discuss it further. So that's what we hope to do. At that meeting, we heard a variety of feedback. There was some support for body worn camera redaction fees, ranging all the way from charging no fees. So I'm not sure what else to say, but it was -- we did get a lot of feedback, and I do want to say, we do appreciate it, and we've tried to take that and come to you tonight with a new proposal. But first, we wanted to just talk about how we did use to charge fees prior to 2017. In 2017, there was a change in legislation that required that even cities who had been charging fees and you wanted to continue charging those same fees, that you had to have a public hearing and have approved by council to charge those fees. They provided some optional fees in the legislation that you could choose to adopt, and those are what we call the statute defaults or the RCW fees. Alternatively, you could conduct your own cost study to determine your actual costs, and either of those methods had to go through a public hearing procedure before adoption. So at that time, the city stopped charging fees. Prior to 2017, we used to charge for police reports and collision reports for $6 a report. And I found this interesting because we -- my notes here. We were charging from, starting in 1978 through 1992, we were charging $3 per report. And then in 1992, they realized costs had changed and went up to $6, and it's been that price since, from 1992 to 2017. So that's just a highlight. Based off our new calculations, we're calculating $8 per report. Same thing with a clearance letter. It was $6 per new calculations. We're seeing that it's $15 per letter, and that's primarily the additional time required in reviewing it by supervisor and having it notarized. Photocopies were 15 cents per page, and then we were charging, we're proposing to charge 30 cents per page. Plan sets, again, I don't want to go into all the details, but I believe our actual costs calculated and our new method of calculating those will be cheaper. Digitizing wasn't no cost. Again, we didn't have an ability to calculate that prior to 2017. So primarily, most of the jobs were outsourced. And then with the agreement of the person requesting those records to have them scanned, they would reimburse us those actual costs that we paid the vendor to have those scanned. We're proposing something not too different, except that we would be still doing the 83 cents average staff time per minute spent scanning those if we estimate that it's going to take us two hours or less. But I really think this is a moot point because so many of our records now are digitized. We've been working very heavily on for the past two years. So we really have very little left in paper that isn't already also digital. And then the actual cost for anything requiring us to, you know, send records or put records on a storage device. I won't go over them now, but if you have any questions, I do want to highlight that we did take a comprehensive look at the police fees and what other agencies throughout King County are charging. And so that was in your packet. Excuse me. And so we looked at the police body worn camera redaction costs, and we looked at the clearance letters and the police reports and collision reports. What we found was that there's, everybody has their own way of calculating them. They pay their staff differently, and some of them use just, some of them just take the cost of the lowest paid person doing the redaction. Some of them take an average, like what we're proposing. So they're really all over the place, but consistently, we were more or less in the middle of the pack on when we did those comparisons of the agencies that are charging fees for all of those costs. So based off of all the feedback that we received, our updated recommendation would be to remove the proposed $9 electronic records transmission costs. That's that $9 gov QA fee. So there would be no cost for basically use of that system. And in lieu of that, we would charge just the staff time it takes to copy the records, which is what we calculated and then rounded down to 25 cents per record. We would waive fees for any requests that total $3 or less. So if you only get 10 electronic records, you would pay nothing. All of the fees we're proposing to remain the same. And we are still proposing that we adopt the low income waiver program where you get 20 records for free if you can attest that you're at or below 50% of the AMI. Okay. So there's still options to get copies of records at no cost, and in fact, we've added one just via the waiver of $3 or less. So you can still view them at City Hall at no cost. You can get them online or printed. $3 or less will be free. Their low income waiver program, we're still proposing. And you can still go through the discovery method if you need your records for a police case or for anything going before court. If you're a party of that case, you can get the records via the discovery process, and that's for free. And then if you are involved in a police incident, you do not have to pay for the police body worn camera redaction. So one of the questions that we received, and we just needed to try to do more research on, was what percentage or how much are we looking at recovering with the proposed costs? So looking at the month of November, I went back and I looked at all of the requests that we'd closed in that month, and then applied the fee schedule retroactively to those requests, as if, you know, what would we charge for each of these requests? And obviously, we don't have police body worn cameras yet, so that's a factor we couldn't estimate. But assuming that November was typical of any other month, so taking the November numbers and multiplying by 12, we estimated it'd be around $20,000 that we would recover. The median cost for a request was $9.50, and that's primarily just because most requests are police requests, and they typically have at least one police report or collision report. So I should say, that's roughly about 10% of a cost recovery based off of the total costs of the public records request program. I think this should hopefully look a little familiar. This is the same example we've been using throughout the presentation. So if somebody were to request the blueprints for their house, assuming that it's 20 pages and it's over 1 gigabyte, which admittedly, most house plans are not commercial plans, sometimes are because they're very, very large plan sets. But just as an example, they could still view it at City Hall for no cost. If they received that electronically, it would total 35 cents because it's 25 cents because it's one record, and it's 10 cents because it's more than a gigabyte. However, it's under $3, so the fee would be waived, so they would get that at no cost. If they did want us to print it, it would honestly be to their advantage to probably get it electronically for free and try to find somebody to print it for cheaper. But we could do that. That's a service we could offer at $81, which is still cheaper than the, I would say, the $5 per page that we were previously charging. We could get it to them via flash drive, looking at what it would cost to order that flash drive at the time that we would need it. It's very infrequent that we need them. And then if they wanted us to mail it to them, again, very infrequent, but we would estimate the costs, and if they were willing to pay it, then we would go from there. For police reports, if somebody requested a police case file that included one police or collision report and 10 additional files, usually those are maybe some additions to the report or just some photos. Photos are pretty typical. If this totaled 20 pages, again, they would pay nothing if they viewed the records at City Hall. If they were to receive them online, again, this is looking at 10 additional records, it would be $8 for the police report and then 25 cents per additional record. So they would pay $10.50. At least that's assuming that they didn't take advantage of the low income waiver program or the opting to go through discovery. We could certainly print those copies for them. It would total $14, and that's 30 cents per page, and then the $8 for the police report. And then again, electronically via USB drive or whatever else comes after USB. We used to charge for CDs, and those are just not really much of a thing anymore. And we could certainly mail them. So we've been talking about the newly proposed option, which is what we are recommending tonight. We could proceed with that and charge 25 cents per electronic record, and then we would waive fees for requests totaling $3 or under. We could proceed with the original proposal to include the $9 electronic records system transmission fee. With that, you would, we would provide the first 10 records for free and then charge 25 cents for every record after the 10. And with that, the police report and collision report wouldn't count towards that. We could also proceed with just charging the police fees as we've calculated them and then adopting the state default fees. Or we could choose to adopt no fees. We are not recommending that, but it is, of course, an option, I think. Yeah, with that, we are looking for your direction.
We'll start with questions. Councilmember Ray.
Two, and they're kind of highly related, and they're regarding the $3 or less provision. The first is, so that's per request, so can I chain together a bunch of $3 requests?
That is a good question. It is something we've anticipated. The Public Records Act does allow the agency to split requests or combine them, depending on if it's, if the subject matters are very similar and you have the same requester, or if they are very different and we need to just organizationally separate those out. So we do have a mechanism in place to either assist customers who've made many separate requests, and we can say, okay, we're just charging you once because this is, this is just one request, and it's just got bullet points versus a request that's submitted that's, you know, 20 bullet points, but they're all very different. I would say those are rare, but for those, we could look at that and say, we do need to process these separately. So could you do that? Absolutely, you could. You could try to bundle as many requests into one request as you can, but we would probably separate those out if they are very different. If you're asking for police records here, and you're asking for the mayor's emails here, and then you're asking for the budget, and then you're asking for traffic report, and you're asking for data on something, and it's like, okay, that's the common theme here. Like, we don't, we're not seeing it. They're all very different. You know, that doesn't really happen occasionally, but yeah, I think more than, more often than not, sometimes people will request basically the same thing or like, you know, within several different requests, and we would, we tend to merge those together.
So if I were to send you a request and ask for the mayor's emails from January, and then another one for the mayor's emails from February, and another one from March, you would probably be inclined to lump them together. Let me, let me, let me go to the point, which is, what's the basis of the $3? I mean, it seems like a pretty small number, and so I can get around it by breaking up a request into a bunch of $3 requests. And I was just kind of really curious why we'd settled on 3 versus 10 versus 25. That's my really underlying question.
No, no, no. That is a good question and a very good example. No, you're right. There certainly could be people that want to circumvent that and make many small requests so that they keep getting their fees waived. And honestly, it's not really worth their time, I think personally. But if they wanted to, they could, and we would, we would look at the request and we would discuss it at that point. I don't see that happening in too often, if ever, based off of what I've seen so far with the city over the past few years. But that is always a possibility, and I think we would deal with it if we get to that point. For the mayor's emails, I guarantee you that there's more than 12 in a month. But we'll, we'll have to take those one at a time as they come. As for why we chose $3 or why we proposed that, it's really a variety of factors, and part of it was looking at what other agencies were doing. And the other part of it was looking at what number makes it worth our while to even go through the process of creating an invoice, creating an estimate. And just going back to kind of our original thought process was that we, we wanted to make sure that the average requester, the person who makes maybe one request in their lifetime, maybe one request a year, that they can just get the handful of records that they're looking for with little to no hassle. And so this would cover that.
End of my question.
Do we have any other questions? Okay. Councilmember Hall.
Just really quickly, I can't remember where we landed on. So if we go through the redacting of body worn camera video for, let's say, a media outlet or something, and then another media outlet requests the same footage, did we figure out what, what happens there yet, or is that still involved?
I will check. Michelle, are you online? Okay. Michelle, if you're able to unmute. Have we received any updates on that from the other police departments?
I'm sorry, say the question one more time for me.
In an instance where somebody would have to pay for a redacted police body cam video, and then somebody else requests it afterwards that would also have to pay, in this instance, we're using a media outlet, and then another media outlet asks for that same video footage. We're looking to see if there was a best practice among police departments for handling this type of situation. Do you charge the first person that makes the request and then not the others, or it just, if there's any best practice around it?
Yeah, we're still actually working through that in finding that answer specifically. So at this time, I do not have a response for that, but we've been looking into it to try to find what agencies are doing right now.
I think part of the hurdle that we found is that it doesn't really happen all that often. But when it does, from what I've, from what I've heard in my, my training, was just that it, if it's already been out the door and somebody's already paid for it, and you just have that file sitting there and someone else requests it that would need it redacted in the exact same way, that they can just have it because it's already available. However, I would anticipate that if multiple news outlets were requesting the same footage at the same time, we could try to come up with some way to split those costs between those agencies since they're getting it redacted in the same way. But this is something that just doesn't occur very frequently. Typically, if multiple people are requesting it, that the, one of the things that I've found most interesting and maybe most frustrating with police redactions, just in the little exposure that I've had to it, is the way that you redact the records is going to be so different depending on who's requesting it. If it's the parent of a juvenile that's been involved versus if it's, you know, a strange relative, or if it's, if it's media, or you need to know if anybody's requesting anonymity. You need to know how old people were at the time of the incident, if this is something that happened in the past, because if they were a juvenile then, even though they're not now, those redactions still apply. So it's, it's very comprehensive, and there's a lot of information that you need to understand about the whole situation. And then you need to also understand who's requesting the record and what's their relationship to the, to the others involved in the incident, and gets quite nebulous sometimes. So very infrequently, would you actually have something that you would redact the exact same way for different people requesting the video? One of the few exceptions that I could think of is a news media outlet because that's, it's just media. And actually, the media is privileged to some things that even other members of the public don't get.
No, thank you very much. And if you'll indulge me, I guess if, if we haven't found best practice, my guess would be that there isn't one, and people will actually be looking to Issaquah, what we do. So my only request would be that we're very thoughtful with kind of the process that we, that we lay out there, because I imagine other agencies will look at this.
And yes, I would think so. And actually, this is, as I've been calling around and checking with all of my peers, it's interesting that, you know, through the few months that we've been working on this, now they're starting to check back in with me and say, what, what did you end up doing? Because now we're looking to do something similar. Can we use your analysis? Can we use this? So I think in many ways, we are leading the way, regardless of what we adopt tonight, the research that has gone into this, and the, just the partnering with the other agencies, and opening up this dialogue has been really helpful.
Excellent. So I'm not seeing any other questions. I will see if there's anyone online at this point for public comments. Okay, we'll skip over that next point. So we're looking for council direction, and so the options kind of up on the screen that are generally suggested is, oh, I was going to go to the other one, but I guess in this case, so we can go with the updated recommendation, we can proceed with the original proposal, including the $9 electronic records system transmission fee, or we can look at actual costs for police fees only or not charging any public records fees. Who wants to start? Councilmember Ray.
I'm happy to start. So thank you for the work you did. I think taking away the $9 electronic records system transmission fee was, was a good move. That, that kind of sat weird with me. I like the idea, and I appreciate the work that went into establishing what the cost for creating the various public records is. But I guess I'm, I'm kind of balled up in the $3 thing. I think, and just from an administrative point of view, that is a very small number to, you know, you can't do anything for $3. So I would be really happy, and from two perspectives, one, if that, that a request for less than $25 was, fee was waived or something like that, because it's going to cost us $25 to do the invoicing and handle the cash or the payment anyway, so we're not really all that much out. And I don't want to create any kind of barrier to people wanting to do public records requests that are within reason. And so that's the only change I would like to, for us to consider, is maybe it's not $3, maybe it's not 25, but it's some, somewhere between those two numbers. Thanks.
Okay. Next one I saw was Councilmember Hall, followed by Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you. Thank you very much to the Clerk's Office and the staff that have worked very diligently on this. I appreciate your thoughtfulness, and I support the updated approach. I think actually seeing the lost, potential lost annual revenue of around $20,000 was actually meaningful to me. You know, that's a cost, that's a policy choice that we set, and, you know, that money could be spent on city initiatives, important community priorities as well. Part of our job as city council members is to be fiduciaries in these, in this chair, right, and to manage costs responsibly. So while I agree, some concerns that came out at the last meeting, ensuring government accountability and transparency, that, those are important. And I think this updated approach actually allows us to both honor that, but also use city resources on what the majority of our community wants us to use city resources on. So again, I appreciate the thoughtfulness that's gone into this. As for the $3 issue, maybe that could be something we just continually monitor, and maybe that's something we morph in the future, but this is a good starting point in my, so thank you.
Councilmember Hunt, followed by Councilmember Joe.
Thank you. I agree with Councilmember Hall. I raised the issue that the previous proposal seems to me that it sort of incentivized, it didn't incentivize narrowing the request to specifically what the requester wanted, which was one of the stated goals of this policy. And so, and that's, that's good from a customer satisfaction perspective as well, because then you're providing the person exactly what they need. So I think that, in contrast, this proposal does that. It gives you a first couple records for free, so if those are the things you want, then you request those specific things. So I'm generally in favor. I like monitoring, but I think that the direction, the direction that this has gone takes into account our feedback from last time, which was diverse, but I think it does a good job taking into account that feedback, and also taking into account that this, I think, would have the impact that people specify what exactly they need. And then if they have specific things in mind, then we are providing that at, at no cost for them. And then I was last time and continue to be in support of the body worn camera redaction fees. That seems like that's very important, and there's a particular skills cut, skill set that is necessary for that. So I'm still in favor of that, and again, just appreciate the changes that were made.
Councilmember Joe.
Thank you. Tammy, appreciate all the work you've done on this, and kudos to the Clerk's Office. I don't know if the Clerk's Office remembers or not, but we had a conversation about how diligently the Clerk's Office analyzes these requests for records. Sometimes you'll get a very broad request for a lot of information, and I know that our staff takes time to really ask the person, what are you really looking for? And it could end up being under that $3 mark just because you communicated with the requester. You've figured out what they really want, and it turns out they only want seven pages that apply to a certain specific little incident or one meeting or one piece of public information. So I think the $3 request, you know, having those fees waived makes sense because it does give an incentive to both the Requestor and our staff to work together to get that under the wire if they can, when they're just trying to figure out exactly what the person is requesting. So I'm really in favor So I'm really in favor of, of that policy choice. I'll just comment on the request from media. When I was a prosecutor, we were prosecuting a Seahawk for DUI and I got a ton of requests from the media for that particular police report. And they were all the same after we looked at them and all the, all the IDs were verified, et cetera. So we only made one file. We had all the redactions in there that were the ones for media. And then as long as it was a media request, I was able to just get those out really quickly and not charge over and over again, because I had done the work just one time. So just a comment to, to the staff there is, as you're looking at those, it can be a labor-saving method to, to meet those requests as well. So thank you very much.
Deputy Council President De Michelle, there you go.
There we go. Thank you. So generally, I, I support this going forward to, for adoption. But I have a question that I didn't have until Councilmember Ray raised the issue. So, so I didn't ask it because I didn't know I was going to have to. So I just clarifying, I believe that we are currently spending about $250,000 a year. And so we're estimating that this will counter or bring in about $21,000 to offset that $250,000, right? So I think that I agree with Councilmember Ray that maybe we need to look at a little bit higher than the $3 and see if we can offset that just a little bit more. It does seem like it's very, very reasonable at this point and we're not coming close to the actual cost of other redactions and the things that need to be done. And in that regard, we're going to find out when we have our police officers begin wearing body worn cameras, how much more expensive it might be after that, after that practice begins. So, but generally, as everyone else has said, thank you so much. This has really been a lot of work and a lot of compromise that you've come up with. And so I would support sending this forward for adoption. And then perhaps we can have a discussion about whether or not we would like a little bit higher fee than the $3 fee. So thank you.
So I want to take a moment and just clarify, because I think the comments I just heard from you, Deputy Council President, are different from the comments that I heard from Councilmember Ray. I believe your intent with a $3 fee was to raise the potential waiver period, so we would actually bring in less revenue. Whereas I believe what I just heard from you is you would like to recoup more revenue, which would require charging more per fee or charging, actually having a cost on more of the small cost fees.
Right. Yes, that was my intent. So sorry that I misunderstood.
Yep. Just wanted to clarify on that. Okay.
Where are we going?
Councilmember Marts, do you have any comments? Okay, I will just go through. Generally, I think we have pretty good records requests. We're not dealing with a situation like some of our neighboring cities. So I'm not overly concerned by this. I think my goal of applying any records costs are, one, to deal with any of the body worn camera issues, because that can be a much greater cost. And also to discourage looky-loo types of large-scale commercial requests that just waste our staff's time and aren't really, truly in service of our community. And so I think this with a $3 fee does that, because it does start to charge at a point where if somebody's a commercial firm and they're just looking for, where can I get free records from, we're now off their list and they would actually have to go through, spending a little bit of money. So I think I'm comfortable with this updated proposal, but I'm wondering whether we have a sense of agreement, because I've heard a few different commentary points here. I think I've heard four in favor of the updated recommendations, but then some commentary back and forth. Does anybody want to chime in as a kind of secondary point? Councilmember Ray?
I, I'm just gonna, so I only have the one, one kind of modification, and that is really around, I think $3 is way too low. I went to the source of all truth and I Googled, what's the cost of an invoice? And, and I can find a lot of different numbers, anywhere from about $60 down to about nine, but nowhere can I find anything as low as three. So my big thing is, we're trying to recruit the, the most amount of money, maximize the return, but we're going to spend more money invoicing than we're going to actually get at some point. So if we move forward with this, I think I could probably be okay with that, but only if we say like, let's figure out really what it costs us to invoice and that we don't be pound, penny, pound, what's the expression? Penny wise and pound foolish. Thank you. I can always count on Councilmember Marts. So I mean, you know, in practice, it makes sense, but in, in, in the large scope, I think we're probably going to be spending more than $3 invoice for $3. So that's, that's my only thing.
Okay. So, nobody else wants to chime in second time, anything? I always look back at Councilmember Hall, because he always brings that last minute commentary. Uh huh, no. Steph, do we have the feedback you need?
Yes, the only other question is consent or regular business?
Does anybody have a problem with it being on consent?
It's gotta be on record.
Oh, gotta be on regular business, because it's a fee. Okay. Okay, well, that answers that, because we have fantastic clerks and they know the answers to all your questions. Uh, Councilmember Ray?
We talked a little bit about public hearing. Was, did we do the public hearing at the last meeting, or do we need to do a public hearing for this?
Councilmember Ray, we conducted the public hearing at the November 20th, or was it the November, was it the November 6th council meeting? Either the November 6th or November 20th council meeting. And we, this was within the range of options that was presented, the 25 cents per record, so we don't need to conduct another hearing. I just wanted to mention that the reason this needs to go under regular business is, if you recall, the council had actually moved the resolution and ordinance. And so at the January 16th meeting, what we would be doing is offering substitute legislation that would replace what was moved that night with the, what the majority of the council seems to be supporting tonight.
Fantastic. So regular business. Thank you, Tammy. Appreciate it. And with that, I think we will go on to our next item of business, which is ID 1547, Enhancing Permit Review Efficiency, presented by Minnie Dollywall, Community Planning and Development Director, and Jean Paul, our Management Analyst, online.
Good evening, councilmembers and any members of the community that may be online. So tonight, it's me. And from our team, we have three members in attendance. Christian Getz, our Planning Manager, James Gray, our Building Official, and Emily Appleton, our Engineering Manager. Also online, we have Jean Paul. He'll be presenting a portion of the data that he worked on. So I am going to share my screen real quickly here. And the purpose tonight is really to come back to you after our discussion in October last year and, and to check in and seek your feedback on our plan to make our process more efficient and how we intend to comply with the target timelines. Just a quick refresher of what we discussed in October, on, in October with you all. The first was to present, you know, you all asked us to present the data and show how we measure against ourselves over time and also how we compare with our peer cities. The second item, I think we had discussion about the root causes. We'd shared some items we had proposed to start implementing to identify, and you asked us to identify the barriers and connect how the improvements address those root causes and barriers. And the third item was really, there was some questions about the state mandated permit timelines. There was some concern about how are we going to be able to meet them, some clarification of those requirements. And you asked if we needed any resources to meet those permit timelines. So since October, we've been working on identifying a few of these items and tonight, we're going to go through each one of these items. And the direction we're seeking is really, this is more of a check-in today, but, and seeking any feedback on how we plan to implement the process improvements that we previously shared. We're also planning to select a consultant to facilitate some of these process improvements with, with our staff, using the lean analysis lens. And then we would report back to you all in June of next, this year. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Jean. Jean, since I'm sharing my screen, I'm happy to kind of keep going. I think Tisha said it's easier for one person to, to share, but you can tell me when to move the slides.
Sounds great. Thank you, Minnie. Good evening, members of the council. My name is Jean Paul. I'm the Management Analyst in the Executive Office. And tonight, I'll be presenting on how the city permit times measure against the city's own historical performance, as well as how the, the city measures against peer cities. I'd like to begin with how the city's permit times have changed over the last six years and briefly explain our methods before covering the conclusions found on this slide. The administration looked at the data for a select number of permit types, and this handful of permit types were the ones that CPD deemed as both important and the best candidates to compare to other cities. So while the data is certainly relevant, it's only a slice of all the activity performed by CPD. We organized the data through the lens of issued permits based on the year those permits were issued. It's important to note that while we use the perspective of the year the permit was issued, generally work on those permits occurred in multiple years. With the data organized in that manner, we then examined two aspects. First, on average, how long it took for a permit from application to issue. Second, how many days on average staff spent reviewing the application? We found the conclusions that are presented on this slide. I'll summarize the conclusions here and then the following slides will present the information graphically and in greater detail. First, building permits such as single-family and commercial construction that were issued in 2022 and 2023 took longer on average than permits issued in 2018. This was the case for both in-house review and overall application to issue time. Second, engineering site work permits like clearing and grading or site development had a considerable increase in processing time from 2021 through 2022. This seemed to correlate with a staffing shortage for this discipline. However, with increased resources in place, those permits showed a return in 2023 to the previous times. Finally, land use permits like SEPA and preliminary plats generally occurred in such small numbers that it was difficult to identify clear trends. There was also an issue with the accuracy of the in-house review times data being pulled from the system. Future analysis will include cleaning up this data and categorizing land use permits by the groups designated in Senate Bill 5290. Next slide, please. This slide shows the data for new single-family building permits. The green line across the top shows the average total days from application to issue for the group of permits issued in each year. The gray line shows the average number of total days that staff spent reviewing the permits that were issued that year. While the overall total time for permits issued in 2023 was roughly the same as 2018, you can see there was a steady increase in the total days that staff spent reviewing applications after a dip in 2019. The administration is still in the process of evaluating the potential root causes of these increased times. So while we can see them in the data, at this point, we're still working through the potential reasons why they're happening. Next slide, please. This slide shows the data for the combined new commercial and multifamily building permits. The green and gray lines show the same type of information as the previous graph. For these permits, you can see a plateau in the overall time from application to issue after an increase in 2020. There's also an increase for in-house review days for permits issued in 2023. Next slide, please. This slide shows the data for tenant improvement permits that have a total construction value of less than $100,000. You can see both a general increase over time for the days spent reviewing and the total days from application to issue for this permit type. Next slide, please. While those previous slides covered building permits, this slide shows the data for the engineering site work permits related to clearing and grading a parcel of land. As I mentioned in the summary, these permit types had a distinct increase in 2021 and 2022 that can generally be explained by a staffing shortage for this discipline. With increased resources in place, the trends are returning to the average times from 2018. Next slide, please. For land use permits like SEPA and short plats, when we looked at what we thought were key permit types, they were generally in such small numbers that there were large fluctuations in the data over time with no clear trends. As I mentioned earlier, there was also a concern with the accuracy of the in-house review times data being pulled from the system. The administration has future plans to clean up this data and analyze land use by the groups designated in Senate Bill 5290. Next slide, please. In addition to comparing current performance against historical data, the council expressed a desire to see how permitting timelines compare against nearby cities. The administration requested data from the 10 cities listed at the top of the slide for building, engineering, and land use permit processing times. And we received only partial data from four cities, Auburn, Bellevue, Kirkland, and North Bend. That data was almost entirely building permit data. And even the cities that provided their data indicated they're largely just beginning to collect and analyze aggregated data and are only now trying to sort out how to collect that data required for reporting on the Senate Bill 5290 requirements. Based on the limited data and the different ways that cities classify their permit types, it was particularly challenging to make broad comparisons between Issaquah and nearby cities. While in the future, the data collected for Senate Bill 5290 will allow for a much easier comparison between cities, the only true apples-to-apples comparisons from the current available data were for two permits. Those are new single-family and commercial or multifamily construction permits, which are presented on the following slides. Next slide, please. This is the single-family building permit data for 2022 and 2023. You can see for each year, the number of permits issued, as well as the average number of days from application to issue for those permits. For this batch of data, you can see that Issaquah is about in the middle of the pack. Auburn and North Bend issued permits in fewer days than the city in 2022, but Issaquah permits averaged less time than Kirkland's. In 2023, Auburn maintained its shortest permit times, while Issaquah was, Issaquah was about on par with Bellevue. Both Bellevue and Issaquah had shorter average times in Kirkland and North Bend. Much like the building permit data from earlier, while we have some initial data, we don't quite have the next level and a, next level of analysis yet that indicates why some communities like Auburn are able to issue permits in a shorter timeframe. Next slide, please. This is the comparison of the combined new commercial and multifamily building permits. Just like the previous slide, it shows the number of permits and average times for 2022 and 2023. I'd like to point out that Bellevue only provided 2023 data and they classify their permits slightly differently. They differentiate between buildings under 4,000 square feet and over 4,000 square feet when they categorize their permits. So you can see two rows for their data for 2023. Overall, the trends for these types of permits were very similar to the single-family permits. In 2022, Auburn and North Bend had the shortest times, while the city times were shorter than Kirkland's. For 2023, Auburn again had the shortest timelines, while Issaquahs were slightly, slightly better than the under 4,000 square foot category of Bellevue permits, but considerably better than Kirkland, North Bend, and Bellevue's over 4,000 square foot category. And that concludes my portion of the presentation and Director Dollywall is going to take over for the remainder.
Thank you, Jean. Should we pause here for some questions about the data or should I?
I'm not seeing any.
Okay. Thank you, Jean. So as Jean explained, you know, that was looking at a slice of data with one perspective, which is the permits that were issued in that year. And as he explained, some of those permits that were issued had straddled multiple years. So the review may have started in 2018. It just happened to get issued in 2022. So, you know, because there were multiple rounds of reviews and and all of that. This team is going to continue looking at data with the idea of what's in the hopper today. So that was looking at what was issued and approved. We're looking at what we're actually, you know, currently reviewing, which is our focus for the upcoming year to get a better handle on 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 that segment of where we can actually make a difference. So it's helpful to look back. It's also helpful to look where we are today and to have a goal of where we want to be in the future. So this slide really shows what happened in 2023. So this isn't taking a look at by different types of permits. It's looking at all construction permits. Did we meet our targets or did we not meet our targets for the reviews that started that year? So the permits may have been in process or not. It's not looking at issued permits. It's looking at everything that was accomplished in terms of review lines. So 4,000 review lines for all the reviewers. On average, everyone seems to have met their targets. But again, it the the variability based on the type of permit and everything else can really make a difference. The other thing I think we're focused on is looking at, you know, is average a good measure? Because if there's, you know, but coupling it up with standard deviation as to be statistically correct. Because if you have few outliers that may skew your data, if we graph it and we get here's our target and we get 90% or more within target, maybe perhaps that's where we need to focus on and figure out what's happening. You know, some, some of those permits may get approved the next day. Some of them may linger on for a long period of time. The other thing I think I would be remiss in saying here, we still have a few legacy projects that are in the hopper that were not applied for in the last couple of years, have been in the city's review process back and forth for a number of years. We're trying to land them to a conclusion and get issues resolved so we can either, you know, make a decision on those. So for 2024, we are going to be dealing with that that segment of our permits as well. So that may make the the data look, you know, will will capture those legacy projects. The other part I think I want to make a point here is obviously, the new projects that are coming in, we're going to tell people you have 90 days to respond. Otherwise, the the code requires that, you know, you have to reapply to kind of move things along as well as so that it's moving along from the city's perspective. It's also moving along from the applicant's perspective. And the focus is going to be on cities in-house review time, not necessarily the total review time. Because some some applicants can turn in the next day and resubmit. Others rely on their consultants who can drag it on for six months to resubmit. So there's nothing that the city can do in those kind of situations. State Bill 5290 focuses on in-house review time only. So I think that's where the focus is. In terms of collaboration with our peer cities, there are a lot of groups that are set up that are discussing. We will share what we learn. We will learn from what they are doing in terms of the data collection. The true apples-to-apples comparison will come after Department of Commerce gives some guidance on how to calibrate this data, how to measure it and all that kind of stuff. So more to come from Department of Commerce as well. As we had previously shared, some of our planned improvements that we have actually made good progress on are updating our application materials, including checklists. So that's a tool for the applicants where we try to find the balance of not making them so intensive that nobody uses them, but but having a majority of our items listed so they know ahead of time what what to submit. Some of the these checklists needed to be updated for a long period of time. We're working on completeness checks at intake and really making that focus of customer friendly. So as we tell them, your invoice is X amount of, you know, you need to pay. We're also telling them you're missing these two things or you're, you know, whatever the case may be. Website, we've updated some of the forms and things, but it's still a process in the works. We hope to accomplish that in the next few months. We've migrated all our permit files to SharePoint. That has been completed. So thanks to our IT staff and and their work in helping us get to that and City Clerk's Office also. The other item that this team is working on is really, you know, to a point of daily to weekly monitoring. But we're going to be creating monthly reports and sharing with our review team because ultimately our success depends on the reviewers who are actually doing this review. But sharing where what the data looks like, what, you know, graphically in the permit center and digitally, so all of that is our big focus. And then target timelines for land use applications. So what's happening with the state bill 5290 is Department of Commerce will be reporting the data in March of 2025. So we are collecting the data in 2024. It doesn't go into effect until the beginning of 2025. So we have next year, you know, and that next year's data is going to capture some of these legacy projects that we are trying to land and get get to a finish line. But the true effective date of this section seven of this bill takes effect January of 2025. So we do think we have a lot of work to do on the land use side to get us to a good point. But we're making good progress there. Yeah, we were talking, you know, this is the slide that's talking about updated timelines. So at this point, state bill had these three tiers. So projects that don't require a public notice, that require a public notice, and the ones that require a public hearing. So we are triaging them in those three categories and setting up our review target timelines. We've readjusted to reflect the reality that we need to meet. We used to give 10 weeks for all types of permits, big or small for land use. So that's shrunk down to four weeks, I think, or six weeks at at the front so that we have more time as as planners prepare the staff reports and others that we're not going to run into a situation of running over those timelines. I think there were some questions about refunding land use fees. So the bill has provisions for if you do these three things that the cities are not subject to that refunding. One of them is optional pre-application. The other one is if you can hold, you know, offer a meeting with the applicant after two rounds to so to cut down the rounds of review. And that is a big focus because sometimes it's lost in translation. You know, the the comments go out, the applicant reads them a different way. They are meant to be in a different way. So having a face-to-face meeting or a Zoom meeting can help alleviate some of the confusion in that. So we will be working with our staff to promote that more more so instead of just writing up the the written comments. But when we send them comments, we offer up, if you want to discuss, please, you know, reach us and and we can schedule a meeting. And the refunding is only 20% of the fees, not the entire fees. So there's some more clear, you know, guidance from Department of Commerce on that. And then last bullet point, I think from council's perspective, you'd asked, you know, what do you want? What for the staff, what does CPD, how can council support us? So we're not asking for any additional staffing at this time. We are going to be looking for an external facilitator to to have these workshops and really get to the nitty gritty. A lot of permitting is very nuanced. You know, if you want to really make a difference, it is getting those checklists, getting all those things figured out. And so and then we'll come back to council to report back and check in in mid-year. And we just need a little bit of time to check the effectiveness of a few things that we've implemented and that we plan to implement in the coming months. That's it in terms of, here's the slide that, you know, we're seeking feedback. If council has any input at this time on the improvements that we had previously shared or if you have any other feedback for us until we see you back in June.
Okay, so I think we are looking for questions as a first point. Do we have any council questions at this time? I am not seeing, okay, Councilmember Hall.
True to my, to my form there. Thank you very much for all the work that's gone into this, all of you. I want to know why you and Jean, and I think in the previous meeting too, have reiterated the fact that a permit was issued and work happens over several years. And that's part of the reason why we're seeing kind of an upward trend. I mean, to me, yeah, if something, you work on something for several years, you work on something for several years. So I guess I'm not following what that distinction is that you're making and why you're why you're clarifying that. Why should I take that as meaningful?
Yeah, I think that was just a clarification of the data. It's, you know, it's not as simple as 2022 timelines are this. Generally, there's an upward trend. However, it's not this, all the permits in 2020, you know, whatever was issued in 2021, say, for instance, some of that stuff got started in 2016. Not all of it. Some permits were kind of going back and forth on on that. So it's hard to parse out data. And and, you know, if you start slicing the permits that were applied that year and issued that year, then then it's not a complete picture either. It's not giving you everything, but it's really looking at a segment of data that's issued that year. So it straddles three years, two years in some cases, but it's the issuance that's capturing all of that that timeframe. So it's not the bar is just for that particular year. So it's a, it's a nuance, but I wouldn't get caught up in that.
No, thank you.
And generally, yeah.
You help make that connection then. So there's really no perfect way to analyze this data.
There are multiple ways to analyze data to get to the root causes. So, you know, the the chart that we showed you really looked at by discipline. So for all types of construction permits, did we meet our target data or not? If there was a consultant, you know, that was kind of the holdup. We've kind of implemented, we did an RFQ, we added more to the roster of the consultants. So we're not, you know, backing up to the same consultant for a lot of work. So the, you know, the the selection is more broad. But also, you know, we are routing them earlier. A lot of times the reviewer would start looking at their plans. Six weeks into it, they determine, oh, well, this requires a consultant like a geotech or a wetland consultant to also look at that. So we want to front load that 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 happens simultaneously when the when the reviews are routed. So those are some of the things by analyzing data in different ways has led to actual identification of the problem and coming up with a solution to solve that. So by discipline, by issuance date, by the type of the permit. So there are multiple ways of slicing and dicing the data. And then looking at it from a, you know, average versus our majority of the permits are here, but you've got a few outliers, you know, taking a look at what is, what are these outliers? Can we, how can we rein them in as well?
Any other questions? Okay, I will again look to our clerk, see if there's anybody online that I should ask for public comment. Okay, so we are looking for feedback at this point. And do you want to go ahead and put that slide back up so that we have it? Okay, so just generally looking for feedback on what the administration has proposed and put together in their memo and their presentation. And then they have detailed down here next steps that they have planned, including reporting back to city council in June of 2024. So who would like to start in on feedback? Oh, thanks for starting out, Councilmember Ray.
Somebody has to get it going. I'm just going to talk about your proposed next steps because I think they're right on. Implementing the identified process improvements. The second one is where I'm really excited. In my brief tenure working for King County, we did a review and a of a lean process for their permitting process. And it really did generate some pretty staggeringly good results. So I believe that if done right and done with somebody who really knows what they're doing, we can really find ways to make a much more effective process and drive a lot of waste out of the system. So I'm like two thumbs up for that.
Okay, does anybody want to follow after two thumbs up? Councilmember Joe?
Thank you, Director. I appreciate the hard work that's been put into this by you and all of your staff. I do like the fact that the reporter is coming back to city council from the from the consultant by June of 2024. I would encourage you that if there are any budget impacts or you see that there are places where we can put $100,000 and make a big difference in the permitting process, to please come back with those even before that final report is done so that we can start talking about those things and putting them into the budget for the 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 next year. Pardon me, excuse me. So appreciate the work and we, I think on the council, are looking for ways to improve the process and the service to our customers and the citizens. So if there are budgetary things that we can put in there, please let us know. Thank you.
Who's next? Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. I agree, there are lots of ways to slice and dice the data. I also agree there were some earlier comments about maybe the average isn't best. And if you think about it, if half the permits were too, taking too long and half of them were taking too short, that would average out to about the right time, but that leaves half the people probably unsatisfied. So I, and then if everybody was right on time, that would also be an average of right on time and everybody would probably be satisfied. So I think that average is probably not the right way, as you said, to look at it. We, in our strategic planning, did a lot of work also with all of the departments and staff and community members to identify targets that we would track over time. And and so I keep going back to those because so much feedback went back, went into those targets, which are on our website and which are really our high level. How do we determine if we're going in the right direction for these core core issues that we identified as important for the strategic plan? And so for that, we have, we have 11 goals with targets. And I keep coming back to that we are currently meeting two of the 11. So I, and there are goals about the time of review permits being met. And I think that, I think that thought went into those. They may not be perfect, in which case we'd be open to adjusting them. But at the same time, they're, they're a pretty good measure of where we wanted to go as a community when we took that big comprehensive look. So I I appreciate the thought that has gone into this. I also wonder if there could be a check in to make sure that the changes that are being made also address the concerns that have been raised by council sooner than June, just to make sure that this is on track. And so I'd be interested in if there have have been discussions or if there's any feedback from the administration about what a earlier check in might look like to make sure that this is on track to make these improvements.
The administrator?
Thank you, Council President, members of the council. We think June's a realistic timeframe. To do that, we don't suspect that we'll have meaningful information for you prior to that. So that's why we picked June.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Anybody else coming in? Comments, feedback? Councilmember Hall?
Thank you again. Ditto. I haven't heard anything I disagree with so far. I appreciate in your planned improvements that you have kind of improvements that are more applicant or customer facing and then also internal kind of service improvements. I think last time this was at council, I talked about making sure we're doing everything we can to make sure applications are complete and ensuring the completeness of those. So it seems like that was part of the planned improvements and having those efficiency checks and then having these internal process improvements. I think that's good and then also having the time necessary to I think that's good, and then also having the time necessary to be able to measure effectiveness on whether those are doing anything. I had mentioned this in the email, and I think it's okay to continue focusing on this, but I personally want to know when we get to, I want to know what point at which we need as a council to start thinking, maybe these process improvements aren't getting us to exactly where we need to in staffing resources. And when that happens, I want to, I want to know that because I think that's an important council conversation. But I buy that this needs to happen first. We're managing assets and resources efficiently here at the city, and so first internal process improvements comes first. But I just wanted to say for the record that I, I think it's really important still that we are kept aware of if there are any actual staffing resources that need to change to affect outcomes that we are aware of. But otherwise, thank you very much.
Okay, I'm going to take my time because I'm not seeing anybody. Oh, Councilmember Marks.
Yeah, I continue to, I think, I think it's good to monitor things closely, but just monitoring is insufficient. My own personal experience was with St. Michael's and the permitting of the parking lot, which moving from a gravel parking lot to a paved parking lot. And it was like, go fix A, B, C, D and E, right? And you go and do those things, and they come back, and it's F, G, H, I and J, and then it's K, L, M, N and O, and it cost us, you know, twice as much and took twice as long as we thought it was going to take. So those are the kinds of things that are harder to, I mean, and those add up into that how long it takes to get permitted. And so I'm all for this. I think we need to, I think we need to be better. So I'm all in favor of this today, but I think that the challenges are really, some of the things, there's no low-hanging fruit here. Just monitoring it more closely isn't going to drive those times down. What's going to drive the times down is more changing the communication tools that we're using with applicants and changing the, you know, it talks about checklist and whatnot, but, you know, it's going to, it's going to be a heavy lift to get a substantial improvement in the time, but I look forward to the effort. So I'm supportive of this today, but just cautious. It's a, it's not a, no low-hanging fruit on this.
Deputy Council President, Deidre Michelle.
Yes, I'll be, I'll be brief because I agreed with a lot that's been said. I do like the idea that we're searching for root causes, and sometimes that takes an outside consultant, somebody coming in with fresh eyes to help a staff or a team to do that. And I have a feeling that that's going to yield a lot of positive results. So I too support with the suggestions and the ideas going forward, and I look forward to the report in June. I will also plus one Councilmember Hall's thoughts that if it does turn out that one of the root causes is we need more people, we'd like to hear that and know that before the budget starts. So, but generally, I think we're on a good track here. I was very fascinated by the, by the information that was presented. So thank you.
So my comments, first of all, I've heard a lot of, hey, if you need more resources, please tell us. And I think that's important for both staff and management to recognize is that we're really committed to getting this done, and we're willing to put the resources in to make sure that we're making a significant change, not just a, okay, we're going to tweak a few knobs here and maybe we'll see a little improvement in the data. I'm looking at this, and I don't want to speak for any of my colleagues, but I'm looking for a big change. Like, I want to beat Auburn and know that we can do that regularly and be able to come out of this and say, we're not just changing and making improvements because SB 5290 said we had to. We're doing it because we have a commitment to making the process easier for groups like St. Michael's that are trying to just get a new parking lot that will serve their, their group. Or people that are looking to make a small change on their home and don't want to have to wait 60, 80, 90 days to get a response or have to do five responses. I want to look at this process as something that's like, no, this is a culture shock change for the city of Issaquah. And so I really appreciate that in looking at root causes, recognizing that, hey, we'd like to bring in a consultant and have a facilitated conversation, and I hope that makes a difference, and I hope that, that does what we're seeking to do. I still feel like six months is a really long time to wait, and so I would really hope that we could choose one area, and I would probably choose those small tenant improvements or something like that where we can just go at something hard and maybe it doesn't take waiting for a consultant to put something big in place for one segment so that we start to get a little bit more improvement. And I think that would also be helpful to showing the business and development community, hey, we're serious about this, and then being able to interact on ways to make an improvement. So I would just hope that maybe we can choose out a segmented area. I would be really interested if we do that in maybe taking a commitment to come back to council in three months on that, potentially to just a committee to talk about, hey, we've made some of these changes and this is how we're approaching things. And then the other thing is, I really want to know what Auburn does. So if we can make sure to have that conversation and go, how do you guys approach things differently? Or is your staffing different? You know, what, what makes a difference there?
Yeah, we expected you would probably have that question, so that's why I think we asked James Gray to reach his counterpart, the building official there, who they have an interim building official. You know, there's some still caution about how they're measuring. First, it was just a number for the first round of review, so we don't know exactly. But, you know, every city is trying to do their business and all that, and so we're paying them for more information that's very suited to ours, so we respect them not, you know, dropping what they're doing and giving us what we need, sort of a thing. So, but we'll, we'll continue to share, you know, the planning directors, King County planning directors meet on this topic on the state bill 5290, there's information sharing in those avenues. So we'll continue to share with each other what, you know, if someone's figured out, then sure, we can. I mean, we're fully supportive of that from a customer-side perspective, and that's why we participate in the mybuildingpermit.com. So the contractors have one portal that they're familiar with, whether they're getting a permit in Kirkland or, you know, on Issaquah, they have one face that they, you know, they can log in and apply for a water heater removal, it's the same sort of thing. So consortium of cities binds together to come up with these sort of customer-focused things. So we'll, we'll continue to work with our peers and share what we learn with each other and also with council.
And I would just say, you know, we're one city out of tens of thousands in the U.S. Somebody's gotten this right. Somebody has a process plan or a checklist, and, you know, there are certain states that there's a requirement that you have to get a permit back by 60 days, or it's free, or they can do anything. So I really, I don't think we have to reinvent the wheel. I just, there's an answer out there somewhere, and I hope we aren't limited to just what the best practice is in King County as well. City Administrator?
And Council President, members of the council, I hope you've heard nothing tonight that would indicate otherwise. You know, the only other context I'll put to this is our land use code. Our land use code is different than other communities, it's different than other states, and we have to reconcile how to do things expeditiously, but also to observe what has been years of community work saying that we are not Auburn, that we have buffer zones, we have natural environment issues, and so that is part of, of the challenge. It's not meant in any way to be an excuse, but it is part of our challenge. And as we look at other communities that are able to say, we'll turn around a permit in 60 days in an area that is flat, has no vegetation and no waterways, if Issaquah was such a community, my sense is that we'd be having a different kind of conversation. But we have to balance those requirements, and we are absolutely committed, and I think you've heard from Director Dollywall and her staff to do that. But I think the context of our land use code is an important element of this. So we will continue to focus on this. I think what's been suggested with the consultants, looking at process improvements are important, but all of this is within that context of a very aggressive code that has a number of constraints on that for nearly every piece of property in this community.
And I will just say, I, I think that's great, and that is one of those answers to a root cause. And it can be then up to council and community, like, hey, if we see this takes a certain amount of time because we have these requirements, are there any adjustments that we would want to make? So I think knowing that information and being able to synthesize, you know, why are certain things taking longer? Well, we've got environmental constraints and our code has these requirements are very important parts of the analysis.
And we want to be cautious to not have that be any kind of crutch, to say, well, gosh, we've got all these requirements, we can't possibly do this quickly. So we're trying to be very thoughtful, have the data to bring forward, because if it does lead to that sort of discussion, the community will demand it and will not, I don't think this council, I don't think the active members of our community will even want to have a discussion because they will automatically feel that this is a red herring. And so we want to be very, very thoughtful as we move forward so that if those discussions are ever broached, they have much, much data behind them.
Yeah, and our focus is, you know, the customer. So we do an annual survey, we have a link on the survey, we read all of those comments that anyone has on how to improve because they're the people we're serving, and they know best what worked and what didn't work, how could we have done better? So that, it's extremely important for us that we take that feedback from the people that we interact with. You know, was it the service? Was it the communication? Was it the time? You know, how can we improve that customer experience is part of this process improvement, definitely.
Okay, so I made a whole bunch of back-and-forth comments, so I'll just turn to the council. Do we have any other feedback coming in on this? Nothing coming down. Okay. Does the administration have what you guys need to move forward on this?
Council President, we do, and thank you, and thank many and the management team from Community Planning and Development. I would like to take a moment as we conclude to recognize Jean Paul. Jean is leaving us this week to go to the King County Council. He is going to serve on their legislative staff to support the full council with legislative matters. So Jean, I want to, on behalf of the administration, thank you for your outstanding work and wish you all the best as you move forward with your career in King County.
Thank you very much.
Man, lose the good ones. Moving on up, thank you. Thank you, and thank you, City Administrator, for that recognition. Okay, well, that concludes our items here. I guess we have good of the order. Anybody have anything to bring up, mention? We're not telling any scores or anything like that, we're just keeping it secret because some people have it being recorded. So with that, I will say we are adjourned at 7:56 PM. Thank you.